I'm saving this for faith.
Okay.
Oh, what, we're live?
We're on the air.
On the air.
There's a spot.
We can start with introductions.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this February 5th, 2020, Joint School Committee and City Council Workshop to Order. Tonight, we as the school committee are welcoming the mayor, the city manager, and council members, along with the school committee members, to hear information and participate in discussion regarding renewable energy contracts. So let's begin with introductions. Karen Matthew, Ward Three, and School Committee Chair.
Cam Hart, Ward Two, School Committee.
Rose Walker, Ward One, School Committee.
Peter Creighton, City Manager.
Katie Cronin, Superintendent.
Miles Walker, Consultant with Witter and Kern.
Adam Cody, Attorney at Drummond-Woodsom.
Aga Dixon, Attorney at Drummond-Woodsom.
Derek Bolenger, Facilities Manager, Purchasing Agent for the City.
Ryan Carrier, Ward Four, City Council, and Mayor's Representative, School Committee.
Holly Lozani, Ward One, City Counselor.
Katie Boss, City Council at Large.
Belinda Gary, Auburn City Counselor at Large.
Tim McLeod, Ward Two, City Counselor.
Ward Five, Leroy Walker.
Steve Milks, Ward Three, City Council. That is a hot mic.
A hot mic.
Jason Lebec, Mayor.
Dan Poisson, Ward Five, School Committee.
Faith Fontaine, School Committee at Large.
Ryan Bellat, Ward Four, School Committee.
Okay, at this point, we're going to turn the presentation over to Aga Dixon and Adam Cody, please.
Thanks for having us. My name's Adam Cody, I'm attorney at Drummond-Woodsom, and I thought it would be appropriate to give a little bit of the backdrop for everybody so they understand some of the reasons why we're here and when we worked through making this decision to help answer some of the broad questions up front that you may have. A lot of discussion about solar power here in Maine. There were several bills that were passed in the legislature last session that really made this much more attractive for investors. The first one was LD 1711, which really opened up what's called net metering. Anybody familiar with the term? So what you would hear before, when it came to net metering, is essentially if you had on your house a solar panel on the roof, for example, you used to be able to get a credit on your bill with CMP. That's sort of how this discussion happened. If you remember, there are all sorts of back and forth in Augusta on whether to keep this or to have it go. Well, last year, there was a working group that was put together to talk about broadening solar power and renewable energy, in particular in the state of Maine. I was a member of the working group that helped write some of these laws that passed. And the biggest change to Maine law with respect to what we're going to talk about tonight has to do with net metering. Before, you could just sort of put it on your rooftop and get a credit for it, but larger end-users, as they're called, on the electricity side, whether it's a large business, whether it's municipality, whether it's a school, couldn't really take part in that. You either needed to own it to take part in it, and it was limited in the sizes that you could do it by quite a bit. So the biggest thing that this law did was it opened it up so that you don't need to own it, it doesn't even need to be in your facility, you can buy into it through a contract what's called the Net Energy Billing Credit Agreement, which is something you're going to hear a lot about today. So essentially, what that does is there can be projects going on throughout the CMP territory, throughout the area, and they don't even need to be here. You can enter into a contract to get a percentage of the credit for that electricity. That, and along with several other bills, that essentially called for the Public Utilities Commission to enter into contracts for renewable energy, expanded things called renewable portfolio standards, renewable energy credits, all of these terms that you're going to hear thrown around, essentially what they did was they created a better environment for developers to come into the state of Maine, or those that are already in the state of Maine, to do solar projects. They increased the incentives for those, for people to be able to do them. That, when you combine with the fact that there is a federal investment tax credit for developers of 26%, that they can get a credit for these developers, developments, and also the decrease in prices in solar in particular, has created a situation here in the state of Maine where you're seeing enormous amount of solar development. Aga and I have been to several of these meetings throughout the state, we're involved in several of these projects. I head up the Energy Practice Group at our law firm. I've been practicing law since 2001. There are more projects going on right now in the state of Maine than I've seen in my entire career, largely because of a lot of these bills that were passed and the drops in prices. It's, it used to be a discussion on doing these types of projects of whether we want to do something for the environment and take an economic hit for doing it. Now the discussion has totally transformed so that it's a good financial decision oftentimes to do these primarily for businesses, municipalities, and others, in that they can lock in their energy costs. When you look at your budgets that you're going through, probably pretty soon, this is the time of year you start hitting budgets, you're looking at your healthcare costs and your energy costs, being the big variables that usually come into play. This affords groups the opportunity to lock in those energy costs over, in this case, up to 20 years. So that with the, sort of the broad introduction, we're going to be going through the details more, but there's been a lot of due diligence on these deals. We look forward to your questions. I hope I provided the highest level approach I could on that, and I'll hand it over to Aga to carry it forward.
Thanks, Adam. So what I thought I would do is, you know, you just got the sort of broad brush-over view of where, how we got to this point, and I'm going to take a deeper dive, like maybe slightly deeper than you may be comfortable, but, but I want to, the reason I want to do that is to really get you all to understand the mechanics and structure of these deals. And the reason you need to understand it is in order to get a good sense of what the risks and the rewards are of these kinds of arrangements, because that's essentially what you will be basing your business judgment on in deciding to move forward or not. So this presentation is, what I have found is it's been most useful when we have an interactive discussion, because there is a lot of technical information here, and if I'm get, if I'm not making myself clear, or if you have questions that my, what I say generates, please pipe in, you know, this, I'm, I'm, we can do this very flexibly, and I have no problem getting interrupted. I do want to make sure that, you know, by the hour's end, you are understanding the basics of this arrangement and understanding the risks and rewards, okay? So, you know, as you, as you start thinking about these, as, as Adam mentioned, the, these arrangements, these agreements are called Net Energy Billing Credits Agreements. You've probably heard more commonly the term Power Purchase Agreement. For our purposes, they're one and the same, okay? So I think because of the net billing law that just passed, we're seeing more and more of these titles, Net Energy Billing Credit Agreements, but the structure is basically the same. And the place to begin is probably very basically to just give you, to get us all started, which is to think about your own CMP bill. When you get that bill in the mail, and you look at it for your household, there are a couple of charges on that bill. One is for the supply of electricity per kilowatt-hour rate, and then there's a charge for transmission and delivery. The same concept applies for, you know, for charges to institutions, institutional customers like municipalities and school districts, except that municipalities and school districts often don't take the standard offer for the electricity supply. Instead, you or your business person competitively bids or seeks out a competitive electricity supplier that provides you with a better deal than the standard offer for the supply portion of that CMP bill. So at the end of the day, you're getting either one bill containing both of those charges, or two separate bills, one from CMP for transmission and delivery, and one from your competitive electricity supplier for the electricity, okay? The thing to keep in mind about these arrangements is that that basic framework does not change. You will always have a CMP bill. I'm sorry. What, what you are, when you enter into a power purchase agreement, you're basically also agreeing to buy a certain percentage of the output of a renewable energy facility, like a solar farm, and you're doing it at a fixed rate. So why would you do that if you still have to pay CMP and your competitive electricity supplier for, for your electricity? You do it because this law basically allows you to transform that, the purchase of that output into a dollar credit on your bill, on your CMP bill, and apply it against any portion of your bill. So you can apply the credit against both the supply and the transmission and delivery charges. Follow me so far? So if you think about it, you know, you're now going to get three bills, and the only way that that is, makes financial sense is if the cost of that power purchase agreement is less than the credit value that you receive on your invoice, right? So with that framework, I'm going to pass out a little, a document that will hopefully help you understand some of the risks that are inherent in these contracts. And the, the reason I want to go through this is the contracts themselves are fairly basic, and they serve really one fundamental purpose, you know, to, to, in addition to like setting how much are you going to buy and for what price. The, the fundamental purpose is to allocate the risk between the buyer, meaning the city and the school department, and the seller. And the seller in this case is often not the developer of the facility, but the investor behind the deal. And that investor, so if you think about a solar farm, you have a developer who's actually building the infrastructure, but that developer is relying on a source of funding, the investor to actually purchase the equipment. And that investor is the ultimate seller of your, of the output that you're buying. Okay, so if you, if you, just starting from the top, basically to, to try to figure out what your costs and savings are, you, you have to start with understanding what your projected electricity need will be over the next 20 years. So the way we do that is we look to the past, and we look at the historical usage of, of the city, of the school department, and we also think about what your projected future needs are. So if you have a major school construction project, for example, we'll, we'll talk about that, how will that affect your projected future need? If, on the other hand, you're looking at declining enrollment, or a reduction in city services for some reason, or closing of buildings, or if energy efficiency projects, projected needs might be lower than what they are currently. And this is where the first set of variables come in. When you're calculating your projected future needs, it's, it's hard to predict what the city and the school district will look like 20 years from now, you know? It's really difficult. So we build in a buffer to try to make sure that you're never in a position of purchasing more credits than you actually need, okay? And so in that first blue section on the page, you'll see I've basically listed the three variables that come into play, the first one being, you know, we, we do our best, but we can't always guarantee that your historical usage will be a reflection of your future electricity needs. And then it's also important to bear in mind that the cost of supply and the cost of transmission and delivery is not static, it's not fixed, it's, it's a, it's a market driven by all kinds of market forces, and sometimes those charges will go up, sometimes they will go down. Now, if you had asked us to predict where things would go about, what, six months ago, we, we would have probably said, well, it looks like delivery charges are likely to go up, and supply charges, well, we thought that they were going to go up too. This is the first year where the Public Utilities Commission set the standard offer at a lower rate than in the year, year prior. So it, it just goes to show that, you know, those are variables, we don't have control over those, those are driven largely by market forces, but they play a part in the calculus of how much you will save at the end of the day. Follow me so far? Okay, you guys are good. Usually I'm, you know, barraged with questions by now, so I see that we have a very sophisticated group. Either that, or you're afraid of asking questions.
We're saving them to the end.
All right, all right, all right, good.
It'll be longer time.
Historically, they've gone up about one and a half or two percent a year combined. And, and to get to the first point that Aga made, because it is very important, the reason we don't contract for the entire amount of your load now, which is almost always the first question we get asked, is because of that variable, that you might have a school close, or they might invent light bulbs that use less electricity, you know, all of these types of things. So if you're using a megawatt, and you ask us why we're only setting the Net Energy Billing Credit Agreement to 750 kilowatts, that's the reason. So you're, because under contract, you will be required to pay for that, those credits, we want to make sure you have a very comfortable buffer so that you're only paying for ones that you know you're going to be needing that amount of electricity at some point.
And we'll circle back to this idea again throughout, throughout this discussion. The second step you take in trying to figure out your savings is, is to calculate the cost to purchase the credits, you know, the output of the facility. And the best way to think about these arrangements is to think of them as an output contract. In other words, you know, a typical output contract is a situation where you contract to buy, you know, 20% of the widgets that a, that a facility produces in any given year. And if the facility is having like a super productive day, and they produce, you know, 100,000 more widgets than you expected, you still have to pay for 20% of the total output. All right, so, so in thinking about what you are buying under these agreements, you're buying a percentage of, you, you know, most of these arrangements are solar projects, but you also have some hydro projects involved, but we're, you know, so when I say solar, think renewable energy. So you're committing to buying a percentage of the output of that solar facility. And solar production, you know, varies. You can think, you can look outside today and think, wow, it was a pretty sunny day, you know, we, we got a lot of sun, the production will go up. Most days are not like that in Maine, and, you know, you have a lot less production. So you can expect that your, your cost of, the cost, the bill that you're going to be seeing for that power purchase agreement will be higher in the summer and lower in the winter, the general proposition. And for, you know, for school departments, that might raise a red flag, because when is your electricity need at its peak? Well, it's certainly not in August, when everyone is out for the summer. So the, the beauty of this legislation is that it, you are allowed to roll over your credits for up to a year. So when production is at its highest, even if your need is at its lowest, you can carry that credit for a year from the time it appears on your invoice, okay? So that's the only reason it makes sense for school departments, frankly. For the city, it's probably, I don't know if you have a, you probably have a higher electricity need in the summer due to air conditioning, but I don't know, I don't know if that would make a difference, but, but that principle is really important because it gives you sort of a built-in buffer to make sure you don't buy too many credits. And then, you know, you will see that each one of these contracts will have a, a projection for how much energy is generated by the facility, and it's important to remember that those are just estimates, they're based on complex modeling, but at the end of the day, they're just estimates, and things could be higher or lower. And, and certainly, actual solar output varies from month to month and year to year. So the amount that you'll be paying for this arrangement from month to month will vary, okay? And then the, the other thing to bear in mind is that under some of these arrangements, you have an escalator on the price, so sort of a built-in price hike, you know, one and a half percent higher than the year prior for the cost of that kilowatt-hour that you're buying. So that's something to bear in mind. And so that's, we are now at the orange section, section on the chart, and this is really, how do you, how do you calculate the credit that you're actually going to get? And the calculation is set out in state law, and the Public Utilities Commission has established rules by, by way of trying to figure out what it is. But basically, it includes the delivery component, as well as the 12-month average of CMP standard offer, for whatever class of commercial and institutional account you fall into. And I, I believe, are, do you know off the top if, if the city and the school, I thought, I, I'm, you're either medium or, or large, I just don't know which one.
Depends on the facility.
Okay, so it's facilities specific.
And account?
Yeah.
Just a little agent, okay.
And the, the thing to keep in mind about the credit is you don't set it, the Public Utilities Commission sets it, and the way they set it is basically by going out to bid on the standard offer every year, as well as setting the, the delivery rate, and, and putting that out to bid. And I think that's adjusted once, once a year, typically in July. So those are factors that are out of your control. They are, however, based on the market, you know, the, these are all requests for proposals that the PUC sends out, and then they get the proposals, they choose the best offer, that sets the standard offer, okay? And then your credit value is basically, you know, the value of your credit, Net Energy Billing Credit, subtract the purch, your cost, and then you get the, the savings that you can apply against your, your CMP bill.
And if in your leisure time, you dive into the, how C is figured out, the math involved there, you'll see that it essentially does track the price of electricity. In other words, if you're saying, boy, our credit value dropped after year five, well, it's probably because the cost of electricity went down in Maine, so it's mirroring that. So that gives you a sense of comfort as you're looking into this, knowing all the variables that Aga mentions, the formula that the Public Utilities Commission uses to figure out the Net Energy Billing Credit value will mirror the price of electricity. So it may go up, it may go down, but so will the price of electricity, it's important to know.
So as you consider whether something is a good deal, you know, we can most certainly help you assess the value of the contract in the early years. For year one, you can crunch the numbers and figure it out pretty easily, but for year 10, 15, 20, you can see how murky it gets. And, you know, that's where really your business judgment comes in, to try to figure out whether... And, you know, that's where really your business judgment comes in, to try to figure out whether the upfront rewards of these arrangements are worth the risks in the later years. Okay? The other thing I wanted to talk to you about, do you have any questions about that basic structure of the deal? Does that, is it settling in?
So if it starts getting murky in the 10 to 15 year, can we back out then or we're stuck for 20 years?
In, you, you really should look at this as a firm contract, that you're committing to it for 20 years. There are situations where you can come back to the table and try to negotiate a solution. And a good example of that is if your electricity need suddenly drops unexpectedly, you know, it's in nobody's interest, neither the investors nor yours, to be buying something you don't need. And ultimately, what the investor is looking for is a credit-worthy buyer and who that buyer is, especially if the, the buyer group is, you know, governmental entities, doesn't matter all that much. So there are usually provisions in these contracts, and we've certainly worked to, to build those into the contracts you're, you're considering that allow you that opportunity. And there are some other safeguards as well, but the, your biggest safeguard and the one that you truly have control over is to properly size your purchase. So this is going back to, you know, why is it that we don't want you to buy 100% of your current electricity need? Because if you buy too many credits, even, you know, even if you can roll them over for a year, you'll lose that value after a year.
Good. To one question, on the, the solar rates that we're going to theoretically lock into for 20 years, that's a fixed rate, that will not adjust on the supply side, correct? Or production side, I should say?
It's a fixed kilowatt hour rate per contract.
For 20.
And some contracts have an escalator.
Okay.
So, and we'll talk about the specifics of those in, in executive session.
Anyone else at this time?
So the other thing that I wanted to just bring you to your attention is, you know, a couple of issues that are particularly unique for, to governmental entities and something to keep in mind. And the first one is, you know, considerations for, for your category of buyers that, you know, a private party may not be affected by. The first one is to give consideration to your procurement policies and the type of approvals that these kinds of contracts ought to get. What we have advised our, our governmental clients is that contract, the contracts should include a non-appropriations clause. And if they include a non-appropriations clause, then you don't need to get legislative body approval. Now, for the city council, that's an, you know, that's not a relevant matter, but for the school department, there's a real question about what kind of authority the school board has to enter into these contracts without going through the, you know, protocol of, of trying to get legislative body approval or even voter approval. And our, our conclusion is that so long as you have a non-appropriations clause, it's, it's appropriate for each body to, you know, approve these contracts by vote without taking any further steps. The second consideration is really to go back to the original question that, or a topic that Adam pointed out, which is why are you entering into these agreements? Why are you doing these projects? And as Adam mentioned, you know, historically, people did it primarily out of environmental considerations. Now, it's more of either a purely financial decision or a combination of the two. What I often suggest is that if you, if you take a vote and you, you clarify to your community the basis for, you know, the reason that is driving your decision and your understanding of the risks in making that decision, that is particularly important for a long-term contract like this, to have a record of, and an explanation on the record as to why you are voting. So I would encourage you, you don't have to make any decisions to formally vote on these projects today, by the way, but I would encourage you, when the time comes, to give some thought to the motivation behind that and to make sure that your vote reflects that motivation.
Just in other situations like this, is there a proper way to make sure that the public is educated about and advised about this, so that we're doing that due diligence that you're referring to?
Yeah, I, I think the biggest, the most important thing is to make sure that, you know, your questions are answered publicly in a forum like this and that your vote and your minutes reflect your thinking. That's really how I've been usually approaching this. What I found, find is that with our, with the clients that we have who are, you know, not persuaded that this is a good financial arrangement and are not willing to take the risk, they sometimes have asked to go out to the voters directly for a, like a referendum vote or, or something like that. That's pretty rare. Most, well, without any exception, none of our clients have, have opted to do that ultimately, but that's been a point of discussion. Okay? And the final thing, just to reiterate, project sizing is a really important consideration. And you have some amazing resources at your disposal to, to our left and right, and to the extent you have any questions about how the numbers have been derived, these are the guys to, you know, to peg your, point your questions to.
Maybe this is, wow, maybe this is a question for executive session, but it's not specific to any vendor or contractor, but in layman's terms, a private industry gathers investors to take advantage of federal and state tax cuts and preferential pricing to produce power into the grid at a discount. Then they mark that up to a credit-worthy buyer, us, in order to make their profit margin, correct? So their profit margin is derived from the federal or state tax credit or incentive that they're receiving.
That's a big part of it.
That's, that's a big part of it, yes, for an investor to be able to have that federal investment tax credit. What helped stimulate it in Maine as well was, in addition to the changes that I mentioned with net energy billing, another part of that bill, you're going to see, you'll probably hear in the news in the next couple of months that the Public Utilities Commission will put out to bid several solar projects where bidders will bid into, do projects up to five megawatts throughout the state and they will have to meet certain criteria. The Public Utilities Commission will evaluate those and then they will accept, say they're going to do 25 megawatts worth of projects, they have to do about 125 megawatts in certain categories over no less than the next four years. So they may choose to do many of those right up front, they may do them over several years, but the point being, say you have 10 bidders that come in on this project and they choose five of them and they bid at five cents, six cents, seven cents, eight cents, all the way up, and they cut it off and they say, we're going to take all the bidders up to eight cents. All the ones that bid, even if they bid five cents, they're going to get paid eight cents. So there's an incentive to have that production. And part of that is because we had a push for an increased amount of renewable energy generated in Maine. Our, we're currently around 30%, our targets are 50% and then 80%. So in order to, to encourage that investment, they've done that. So that's, that's a big way why, why you're seeing developers come in here. As a, as another historical point for you, thank you, I heard my
Thanks so much.
... voice going. The majority of solar in the United States had, for other states, is typically these large, ground-mounted, grid-scale, commercial solar, whatever the category is, but you would see these big fields of solar panels because of economies of scale. The larger the project you do, the more cost savings, the more energy produced, et cetera, et cetera. In Maine, you'd see more rooftop. And it was because of this sort of roadblocks, developers would call them, in our laws, limiting the size of projects, not incentivizing them, not allowing things like net energy billing. So by getting rid of those, expanding them, you're seeing a lot of developers that are coming in that are saying, this is really a prime area to promote. I was at the New England Power Generators Convention in Boston two months ago, and a lot of the top solar developers in New England were there and they were saying the hottest market right now is Maine, because a lot of the projects that other states had, a lot of other states had these types of incentives, but they would do them at the, the easiest place to do them right away, and a lot of those projects have dried up. And coincidentally, a lot of the incentives have gone away. So Maine is a little late to the party on the incentives that others have done nationally. If history in Maine goes along with history in the other states, we'll probably see a lot of development in solar in the next five years in Maine, and then you'll probably see the legislature and the Public Utilities Commission say, okay, a lot of the low-hanging fruit, easy projects, near, near substations, great sun, have kind of dried up. We're going to, and we've gotten to our goals, so we're going to go back on some of these incentives. So I think that you're probably going to see the next four or five years, a lot of solar development in Maine, then it'll sort of level out, but you're seeing a lot of, a lot of it happening and you'll hear more about it in the next year or so. Does that make sense?
That makes sense, yeah. Executive session?
Ready for executive session?
Let's go.
Okay, so we have to do this separately because we have the school committee as well as city council here tonight, so I'll start with making the executive session motion and Jason will follow, the mayor will follow, sorry, with, with his executive session. So can I entertain a motion from the school committee to enter into executive session for the purpose of a consultation with attorneys pursuant to 1 MRSA 405?
So what?
The move motion from school committee rep Carrie, sorry, Bellknapp, second?
Second.
Aye, all those in favor? Post, okay, motion passes, we're in executive session.
I'd entertain a motion to enter into executive session, discuss a legal matter pursuant to 1 MRSA section 40.